Okay, I'll call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for March 6, 2017 and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to meet as commissioners to do the county's work, give us the knowledge to do what's best for our citizens. We pray for both domestic and international peace. We ask for the ceasing of violence across the world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, the first matter we have on the agenda this morning is the call to public hearing. This is a request for call to public hearing for creation of five fire service districts per the town of Waynesville for excluded areas in and next to their current fire district. The hearing will be on April 17th, 2017, so that's about six weeks away. We have Johnny Glantz here, who is our Fire Marshal, and Joey Webb, Senior, who is a Waynesville Fire Chief. If you all come on up.
Morning.
Good morning. Gentlemen, while Johnny's getting his things prepared, I'll give you a little bit of background history on the fire service districts. Back in 2006, Nolan Palmer, the county Fire Marshal at that point, tried to be inclusive in the whole county to put the whole county into fire districts. And where we ran into problem in Waynesville was where the city limits lies. It created pockets around where the rural fire district didn't connect together. So, since they weren't contiguous, we had to go back and name these districts separate. At that time, we had seven districts that were included in that. Over the last few years, we've took those one at a time. We took Howmill, the top of Eagles Nest, and Ivy Hills into that. There's still, there were, in that group, there were four, and Johnny and I sat down recently and went over that, and we found an area called Lloyd's Mountain, if you're familiar, off the bypass, above the motorcycle shop that had been excluded. Waynesville, over, for as long as, over 50 years, when they laid water lines years ago, that was before fire tax districts, and they, if they had a water meter and served you water, they charged at that time $2 a month for fire protection. Well, that, over the years, had increased up to $4 a month. And the theory is, is to do away with that $4 a month charge, and all the people in the Waynesville Rural Fire District is paying the six cents per hundred, and we were requesting that all these areas pay the same amount, six cents per hundred, all across the board. Lake Juneauleska Assembly is probably the largest, and during the time of possible annexation, that was kind of set aside and due to the possible annexation. So, since that point, that has been taken off the table, and so they've been included in this area as well to complete this.
Do you have anything to add, Johnny?
Do what?
Do you want to add anything, Johnny?
Not really. These are, we've been in the process for many years, as most of you know, getting these excluded areas into a fire district, not only to help pay for fire protection, but also give them an insurance break.
Okay. And Joey, could you go back through those, each one of those areas that will be the five areas that will be the new five fire service districts?
Sure. And we have proposed a kind of a name change on those. We've kind of named it by the community, and due to the Lake Juneauleska Assembly area, which includes part of Golf Course Road and up in that area there, we've actually added those Waynesville Rule Number One, Two, Three, and Four, and so forth. And with the county's permission, at some point, we'd like to go back and name Howmill. Office of State Fire Marshal has requested this, because in Raleigh, they don't know where Howmill and all this is, and they look at it and see Waynesville Rule, then they know it's tied to the Waynesville Fire Department. The areas right now are Lake Juneauleska Assembly, we have the Shingle Cove area up here, we have Knollwood Drive area, there's an area there, and there's a two, two small parcel property of Reinisham Farm right there, and Number Five is the Lloyd Mountain area up there off the bypass.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
We don't have any pockets that we need to look at in the future.
No, that'll take care of Waynesville. Now, there may be others throughout the county that still have a few here and there, but that takes care of all ours and completely gets that off the table.
There's only about three, three more larger areas in the county left after all of our district expansions. One of those near the state line, and two of them are in Bethel.
On this, these particular areas, you all have been servicing them now, and you've been getting some kind of a monetary reimbursement.
Yes, we get that per the water bill. Now, with the exception of Lloyd's Mountain and that area up there, we're not receiving any compensation because they don't have water lines running throughout all that property.
But you all are covering.
We're covering it anyway. Yeah, we don't, we don't stop and look and see who does or not.
And so basically, what we're talking about here is what we're doing throughout the whole county and bringing it into line with what almost getting close to 100% of our citizens are doing.
That's correct. We just have these few small areas, most of them being in Waynesville due to the city limits, the way it, the way it worked out. So, that takes care of those doughnut holes.
Say that was six cents on the hundred?
Six cents per hundred. That's, that's what we're charging district-wise, you know, the Waynesville Rule area. It started out, Camp Branch was the first fire district that we started, then we had Big Cove and South Waynesville, and during this process, we combined all those districts together because there were some loops where there's some holes in that, and that was the Waynesville Rural Fire District. And at first, and I don't know if Chip remembers this or not, we looked at just doing that as a whole, but since it wasn't contiguous with the Rural Fire District, we had to go back and name those parcels separate.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I assume there would be a possibility at a later time of merging some of these into one if it turned out to be the simplest way to do it, correct?
Well...
Since they're all being served by Waynesville.
Yeah, well, that's why we're going back and rename them Waynesville Rule. You can probably answer that question better, Johnny.
It's easier for the Department of Insurance, they get questions from the insurance organization in Raleigh. It's easier for them to look at these districts, and if they're named Waynesville One, Two, Three, or Four, they know who covers it. Right now, we name them by the area, and then they have to contact us, who covers this area. So, it's a lot easier for them to do it that way. But a lot of these, a lot of these will never be able to be included in just one district because they're not touching, they're not contiguous. That's a requirement of the state that they be next to each other and touching.
How did we get such a piecemeal network? Can you explain that?
Well, yeah, that's just, well, the whole county pretty much was okay, but when you put the Waynesville city limits in the mix, that's where it created the pockets. Yeah, because we don't have, we're not city limits covered. Just like on Howmill Road, we had the area out there that's really close, you would think it's city limits, but it was not.
Yeah, and we had a lot of our districts were, were made districts in the 60s and 70s, and along those times, we would go from a three-mile district out to a four-mile and a five-mile, and doing that, you get pockets here and there that you can't take in.
It's like if, and you can tell me whether I'm correct here, if Waynesville was a perfect circle, or the town limits, or a perfect square, or a perfect rectangle, then you don't have the pockets, but it's not. It's little jags and issues and runs, follows highways, and that's why, and then you get, you get things to... Do you all do like the, some of the rural fire departments, you know, like for the first responders responding to these things?
Yes, yes, we're full coverage, medical and fire.
Okay. Because, you know, I know this is probably a little bit of an increase to some citizens, and, you know, fires are not probably as relevant or as, you know, people think they're out there, but I can assure you that there is numbers and numbers and numbers of first responder calls that I know the rural fire departments respond to, and I'm sure that you all would do that, so it's, it's not like, I mean, they're getting a lot of services.
Right, right, we get a lot. And also, we have Fire and Life Safety Education Program where we go to the schools, the communities, we do a lot of that in the Juneauleska area, especially with the summer camps and stuff down there, and pretty bar-based.
Okay. If not, I guess, I kind of forgot, we'd need a motion to put this on for a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion then, unless there's any other questions or discussion, that, that we have a public hearing on the creation of five fire service districts per the town of Waynesville for the excluded areas on April 17th at 5:30 PM.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
One thing on that also, the town will accept the payment for notification and all that. We'll cover all that to take care of that.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
I know it's quite a lot, so we, we agreed to do that.
All right.
So it saves the county.
We need to put that, well, we can talk about that here.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is public comment session. I don't have anyone signed up, but if anyone would like to come up and speak, now's the time. Okay, funny how that varies so much. Next is constituent concerns. Mike?
Would like to, well, he's already left. I was going to just thank Joey Webb for his recognition. I think the mayor said that at our COG meeting, and it's a state recognition, so like the Fire Chief of the Year type situation, so just wanted to mention that, and continuing to work on broadband and internet service throughout the county. Had a conversation with some, or a board member of the Rural Electric Utilities over the weekend, and expressed the importance of how they are, they are a very key player in this expansion, and we need them at the table, so.
Webb? Nothing. Bill? Brandon, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. I guess, I've got a few things that I suppose we'll talk about in the constituent concerns, because I don't think we need to add them to the agenda, but as regarding the resolution that we passed last session, or last meeting, it appears that our representatives, I sent a letter to Jim Davis and Michelle Presnel and Mike Clament, requesting them to consider placing or submitting that resolution and our request to have an appointed tax collector to the legislature, and it appears that Senator Jim Davis would attempt to submit that, but wanted to get approval by the two representatives as well, because it's my understanding that it has to be unanimous for a local bill to be, to be passed or submitted. Is that correct?
To have a chance to pass.
Right. And so, it appears that the response is, it doesn't appear, that Mr. Clament wants us to have a referendum, that is a vote, at the next, at the 2018 election, and it's my understanding that Ms. Presnel wants the same. So, with that being said, it does not appear that they, that either Representative Presnel or Representative Clament is going to honor our request for the resolution, so I don't know, Commissioners, how you feel about that and what we need to do.
You know, of course, mixed emotions about it, but, you know, I wonder if they realize, you know, what we're trying to do there, and, you know, that's get qualified people in place that, and to meet the statutes, how they're written, and how the thing works. And I'm not sure that any of the 99 counties that have done this went through a referendum, as far as I can tell. I don't...
I think one...
I think one may have.
One county.
But I'm not sure how many, but I know that Chip found that Mitchell County, I believe, had done a referendum when he did his research on this topic.
I wonder, you know, how the referendum, I mean, you're talking two years, and then, and then if it does pass, then another four years, and how quality of people are you going to get to run that know that, you know, hey, I may just be here four years and that's it? So, I think it waters it down completely, so.
Any comments?
I probably shouldn't say anything.
I wish you would.
The only comment I have, I'll be down in Raleigh next week with our state association. Do we need to take this resolution to the state association, because they do fight for all 100 counties, so.
My opinion is that they need to be aware of it, for sure. It needs to be...
Because if it can happen to us, it can happen to some other counties.
Right. Well, I agree. In the letter that I, that I sent the other day, I asked them, I anticipated the fact that Representative Clament, Representative Presnel would not support this, and it was, it was extremely perplexing to me that a board of the five of us voting unanimously, three Democrats, three Republicans, so we know it's not based on party lines, asking for something that has been done for 99 counties out of 100, it's, it's confusing and disappointing that our representatives cannot present that to the state. Basically, it feels like Haywood County doesn't have any representation in that area when they take that position, when five people who have been elected by all of Haywood County, and this is for the benefit of Haywood County, and they can't present that. And a referendum, I believe, would cost us, well, wouldn't cost us much, but it costs around $4,000 or $5,000 for us to have that.
But we do need to point out that Senator Davis would do this, but it's pointless for him to introduce it if the House is going to block it.
Right. And I wanted to make sure that that was clear, and I think I did make sure that was clear. And I did speak to Jim about it.
I'd like to make that comment, too. You know, I've had some conversations with Senator Davis, and, you know, he's very much a local government person, and he understands, and has worked very well with us on, and would bring this in, but he knows that he has to have that support in that House, and if it's not there, you get what you can get.
Yeah, he's a former commissioner in Macon County.
So, do we want to discuss changing the resolution, or with the time factor, the way it is, just waiting? I mean, if we, if we choose to have or ask for a resolution where there's a referendum, like I think Kevin said, or Mike said, it's going, it won't be until two years from now, and then it won't take effect for four years, so we're looking at six years. I'd almost think we might just wait and see if we can get some more representatives. What do you say?
It's almost like time is not the essence at this, at this time.
Right.
Yeah. So, what would you, you guys, I mean, what do you think? Just let it ride like it is, and then see? If they don't pick it up, they don't? If they do pick it up, we know, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's what I would rather do. I would rather just let it ride. You know, you guys can make your own decisions, but I would rather just let it ride and see how it plays out.
All right, well, if that's the case, we'll just leave the resolution. That is our request of our representatives, and we appreciate Senator Jim Davis, his willingness to submit that if he could get the assistance of the two House of Representatives, which are Representative Presnel and Representative Clament, who do not wish to assist us in submitting that resolution.
I would like to make one comment. We, we live in a constitutional republic. We don't live in a democracy. The democracy part of our republic is we elect officials to make decisions for us and enact laws. We don't put it out for the public to vote on every issue. If we did, the founders called that mobocracy, because that is not, and that's not what the government, that they set up for us. And our representatives need to do their constitutional duty and uphold the Constitution by voting for what I think local control and what the people, we're the people closest to the people in the, in the public. We're, we're, you know, we, we hear, I deal with property owners every day, and there are taxpayers, and there are property owners, and there are voters, and that, and by overwhelming response, they've asked that this be an appointed position, and for reasons that have become very obvious. So, it's, it's very disappointing, and I agree, I do agree with Kirk that, and I believe, and I appreciate Senator Davis, he believes in home rule. I do, too, and it's too bad that, that we can't have that. I believe that's the best government, is when you have home rule and you abide by the constitutional process that our founders have put in place for us to operate our government, and that's when our government works best, and it has for over 200 years. And it is very disappointing that this has happened.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, we'll, we'll move on. The next thing was Representative Presnel was asking for instructions on the removal of emissions testing. Ira?
Yes, I got an email from her legislative assistant late last, at some point last week, and they were asking if this issue had come up previously on the emissions, and asking what the, the board thought on that.
I've got a lot to say about that.
Okay.
She had contacted me a while back and wanted to discuss this, and I've yet to hear anything or have a, you know, I've even reached out, you know, about this. This was back right after the election, and have not heard one word from her about this. You know, I am in the business where we do this, along with Commissioner Rogers down there, and, you know, there has been benefits for having this, and so, you know, my thoughts were is, you know, we need to do a little bit further discussion or study on it to see, you know, we know that our biggest employer is Evergreen, and they're under some stringent air quality issues, and so the area has to rate at a certain amount, and for them to be able to operate at the capacity they operate. And if you start pulling back some regulations on, you know, air pollution or whatever, it could jeopardize some jobs at that plant down there. So, you know, I think that instead of a half-cocked effort to do something, it needs to be discussed a little bit more like I thought it was going to be, and it has not. And I've also had that conversation with Senator Davis, and he had, him, he's been very open to listening and understands the importance and, and the benefits of it. So, that's where I stand.
Okay. Has she submitted any formal request, or is it just?
It was just, all I've got was an email, an email from her assistant is all we have.
Have they presented any type of plan, or just...
No, no, just say, is there any interest in it, basically?
Okay.
So...
Brandon, do you have any comment on that?
Well, I had spoken with her last week, I believe it was, about this, and I was under the understanding that it had to be introduced, and like that day or the following day. I may be wrong, Ira, but I don't know what the opportunities are of introducing these type of bills, but that's, that was my understanding, and I feel the same as Michael. I'm under the understanding that, you know, that Evergreen was on the threshold before emissions started, and then after emissions started, it dropped that, that air quality report that we got below the threshold quite a bit, where we didn't have to be as concerned about it. You know, I'm torn on the issue a little bit. Also, I understand, I see people coming in my shop every day that have to spend hundreds of dollars to get their vehicles fixed, which you feel for them, but at the same time, I think it is helping keep our air quality down to a level to where Evergreen can operate without having to worry. So, I would like to speak with her more, you know, and us talk about that more, if that's something we want to do going forward. But like I said, I was under the understanding that it had to be introduced in, within a couple of day window there, so.
Okay, so I guess what you're saying is we need a little more guidance on what the exact request is that she, she has of us, on what, because it appears that they want us to support or submit some type of resolution where, whether we're for removal of emissions testing or against, so, but that's all, we don't really have any guidance.
Right. You know, right now, the state of North Carolina, we have two, we have a safety inspection that's for 95-year-old vehicles and less, and for 96 and above, we have a safety inspection and an OBD, or onboard diagnostic test for emissions. That's your check engine light you see, you know, and, and a lot of this was done, you know, because of air pollution back in 2005 in the area, and, you know, and then a lot of it was done also for fuel consumption. You know, when you got a check engine light, you've got an issue going on with your vehicle. It does not run efficiently, it doesn't burn fuel efficiently, and so all this was done to try to, you know, help, just make, you know, have sure, make sure we had safe cars, we had cars that were admitting the right amount of emissions out, and so it's transferred. But as we have gotten, because of these items that we've been doing for years, as they've begun to work, we've, our air's become cleaner, and I want to go back, I can remember sitting in my store in the 90s, looking out on a summer day, and it was so hazy, you couldn't see the mountains. And now you sit out there on a good, clear day, and you see them, and it's, it's really nice. So, that's, that's a lot of what went on, and so, you know, we've, we've kind of got down below the threshold now, and, you know, there's some things that you could probably do, and one of the things is to, Haywood County is eligible to potentially remove the emissions part of the safety inspections deal, and, you know, that's, that's where, what she's talking about, and, you know, but you've got jobs, you've got pollution, you've got a lot of stuff out there, and, you know, it's a, I just think that my opinion is, is, you know, it's served very well, it is. I have to pay it just like anybody else pays it, but, you know, and it may be that we could get by with it and not have to have it, but I don't know that we've actually had enough information or study to see if that be the case.
I think, too, Kirk, I remember back in the early 2000s when we were commissioners in that first term, there was, I think we had to come up with a plan because we were close to being a non-attainment county or something like that, and I remember Rick Honeycutt was our assistant manager, and I think he drew up a plan for emissions because we were close to being, to where I guess we could have never have a business come here that had any kind of emission. That's what I took it to mean, and so we had to do a plan for that, and, and that has drastically, you know, we've improved from that. And then I believe we had a report just recently that was recommending Haywood County not be in the, you know, for us to do away with emissions, but yet, air nitrous, is it nitrous oxide? I forget what it was, Ira. Our emissions in nitrous oxide was higher than Buckham County, who they recommended not come out of it. So, it didn't make sense to me. It was supposedly scientific, but it was, why is, you know, why do we want to come out of that? Plus, with Evergreen, they just spent tens of millions of dollars to put in their, their gas, instead, I guess, coal-fired, you know, gas-fired, for, because of their emissions. And so they have spent a lot of money to comply with the federal government, and it is cleaner air, and I'm, I guess I'm a little bit, I'm asthmatic, and breathing is very important to me, and I know when a car goes by that it's having trouble, I, it's, I, you know, I never noticed it before, I guess maybe before I was always, you know, before we had these emissions, it was just normal, but now, when, when a car goes by and it has an emissions problem, it's, it's like I can't hardly breathe. So, I mean, I think it's important for us to have clean air, and this is some, this is a way that everybody can kind of contribute. And plus, if your cars are, are not being efficient, your mileage is way down. I know I have a Yukon, and when that check engine light comes home, my gas mileage goes way down, and then when I repair that oxygen sensor, the mileage goes back up, so I almost think it might be a wash. But the good thing is, is I know that the air's, it's a lot cleaner, and the environment, you know, I'm kind of protecting the environment, so that'd be my thoughts on it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, my thoughts are the same as the rest of our commissioners here. We don't know if this will push us over the threshold, if we're, you know, on a summer day and the air's not moving, you know, not having the regulations could push us over the top. And I'm, go back to the early 70s, I was Assistant Principal of Husky High School, had, I think, 21 buses. I remember in the fall having to go find my buses when it was so foggy, they couldn't see how to drive, so that was also when the river had a head on it. So, we've come a long way, and I don't think we need to go backwards in letting up on the regulations that's got us to where we can actually see our mountains in the summertime, so.
Okay. So, it sounds like we need some more information and do a little more investigation before we stake ourselves... before we stake ourselves out on this.
Okay.
Okay, next, there's no other constituent concerns? Next, we'll go to the discussion and adjustment to the agenda. Does anyone have any items for that? Any further discussion or adjustment? The Republican Party's asking for a waiver of the electronics deposit for use of this room on March 11th, so I would add that as, since there, since we need to make a decision on that, because it's something that has to be done by March 11th, we'll put that on the agenda, I'll add it as number 12. Okay, next we'll move to consent agenda, and the first is request approval of February 20th, 2017 regular minutes. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to those minutes? All right, if not, we'll move to request approval of budget amendments. We'll have Julie Davis come up, and Julie, I'll just let you announce each one.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first budget amendment that I have for you actually has a contract attached. This contract is really under the threshold for what you need to approve, but if you have any questions about it, we do have our Health and Human Services Director here that can answer any of your questions. The budget amendment, though, is for $2,610, and what this is, is the difference in the amount of a one-year contract and the amount of a 17-month contract, we try to put all our contracts on a fiscal year, so this contract is going to carry through June 30th, 2018, and that's why the budget amendment is necessary.
And it's a contract for what, Julie?
The contract is for inspection management system software for environmental health.
Okay, and this is to increase efficiency and allow public viewing?
Yes.
And is that public viewing on the internet or at the site? Okay, so basically, this will allow people to go on the internet, on the county website, and view a restaurant's grade. Okay, all right, any commissioners have any questions about that? All right, next, next item, is this you, Julie, as well?
The next is a budget amendment also, this is for $5,600. You might remember when we brought the Moonicove Convenience Center project to you, we had some preliminary costs in there that I had mentioned, I might be coming back to move those out of the project and move some engineering costs into the project, and when, when all the dust settled, we needed $5,600 added to that project, and this is coming from a transfer from the solid waste fund. This is a $5,600 increase in the Moonicove Convenience Center project in the project fund, and it's being paid from a transfer from the solid waste special revenue fund.
Okay, commissioners, any questions about that?
Just an observation, it appears that this site is really moving quickly now, and that they're ahead of schedule, and some of the things that we talked about a little earlier about, that caused the cost to go up, looks like there's going to be somewhat of a savings, still a little bit unsure as to how much, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, we're hoping there will be.
Wanted to make that comment.
But if you drive by, you can see they're really moving along with that site.
But this here is an increase for professional services?
Yes, it is, and if you'll remember, there was $30,000 sitting in there for preliminary, the preliminary site. I've left the 30,000 in there and increased it to 5,600, but the preliminary, the temporary site is going to be paid from the solid waste fund. That's really not part of the project.
Okay, any other questions? All right, next is capital project fund EMS emergency management base, 64,720.
And you'll notice the 64,720 is the amount of this budget amendment. What I'm doing is I'm moving the 64,720 into a furniture line item so we could pay for the furniture now that the building is almost complete. The budget amendment, what you're showing there, that $2,500 is the difference that we need. We were able to pull $45,907 from contingency and $16,313 from some professional services line items that we're not going to be expending, and we actually had 2,500 in interest for the loan for that fund, so all of that together gives us our 64,720 to purchase the furniture for that EMS emergency management base.
Okay, was, was the furniture in the original bid?
No.
No, it was not?
No.
So now we're going to be able to add that? How, how are we going to pay for the furniture beforehand?
It's, it's being paid for with the project contingency. When we do a loan of any kind, we have to have project contingency, and in this particular case, we felt like we probably would not need much of that contingency, so we might be able to use that for the furniture, so rather than increasing the project to cover some of that furniture, and some EMS actually said they could probably use some of their furniture they already had to move over, we decided we wait toward the end and see how much contingency was left, and you can see we've got 45,907 left, so it looks like that's a, a good fit to move. So this is the, the loan account, and it's the contingency from the project itself.
Who was the architect on this?
This was, was it Paget Freeman?
Paget Freeman.
Paget Freeman.
All right, we appreciate Paget Freeman, it's rare that we have leftover money from architecture engineers.
They did a really nice job, yeah.
So, I'm going to give a shout out to them at least. Okay.
Need to use them more often, don't we?
Do what?
We need to use them more often, right?
Anyone have any questions? Okay, anything else, Julie? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it was presented.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. All right, we'll move to old business. First item with old business is to request approval of application for a special use permit for a new stealth monopane telecommunications tower for Selco partnership doing businesses Verizon Wireless on Sleepy Hollow Lane for the third time in 10 years.
The third time in 10 years. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I bring before you a resolution requesting approval of the issuance of this special use permit. We had a public hearing in January, and we went through the entire process for the third time. We did find that there was a, a little bit of an issue with noticing one of the property owners, Mr. Jerry Terrell. We discussed that during that public hearing. The applicant has taken what seems to be all reasonable measures to contact that person. They received a certified return receipt for delivery of a notice, made multiple attempts beyond that by phone and by mail to contact that individual who resides in Florida, so in the event that they were unable to talk with that person, the attorney for the applicant provided an affidavit of service and outlines every single step they took to, to try to talk to this individual and make them aware of it, and the county attorney, Chip Killian, has reviewed that and seems to think that, that affidavit is adequate for all reasonable measures taken to notify that person.
Okay, so you feel comfortable with that, then, Chris?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
How much time has elapsed since he, that you got confirmation that he received the letter in today?
The confirmation was prior to the public hearing in January. It wasn't 10 days prior to, it was a couple of days prior to.
Okay.
So we've had six weeks.
Okay. And where's Mr. Terrell located?
In Florida.
No, I mean, as far as his property goes, where is it located? Or do we know? Is it, Ms. Good, you're here?
She can, she may be able to answer that better.
This, this is your affidavit, the board of county commissioners has a packet, and she's committed an affidavit about, how they've attempted to notify Mr. Terrell, if you want to come up and explain that.
Good morning. Mr. Terrell, actually, he owns a piece of property that's actually vacant, vacant, it's in the Lake Junaleska Assembly, and it's about a quarter mile from the tower location, which is why he was captured within that notice requirement, but it is a vacant property, as I've confirmed with the Lake Junaleska Assembly.
Okay, so it's a quarter mile away, and it's not, the pole's not going to fall on his property?
Correct.
And it looks like you've made a lot of attempts to, to notify him?
Correct.
Okay, all right, commissioners, any questions of Ms. Good or of Chris Boyd?
When's construction start?
Ten more years.
Well, I told them to make sure we got approval first, but they, they've been contacting me, asking, you know, what the status was, because they're trying to order the tower, so they're in that process, and then we'd have to do, you know, the stormwater study to make sure that that was not going to negatively impact the adjacent property owner that came to the hearing last time, but as soon as we can get that and the building permits, I'm told that they will build it within the year deadline this time.
Okay, and well, if there's nothing, anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application for special use permit for the monopane telecommunications tower for Selco partnership, doing businesses Verizon.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris. Next, we'll move to new business. First item of new business is request approval of change order number three for the EMS emergency management base for removal of a wall, sheet rock work, electrical changes, and floor work in the amount of 3,718 from project contingency. We're glad to welcome Dale Burrus back from a long hiatus. Good to see you, Dale.
Glad you're back for vacation, Dale.
Yeah, vacation was long and extended, wasn't it?
I wish it was a vacation, I want to thank everybody for their thoughts and prayers, it really means a lot, and, you know, there's a lot of people stepped up while I was out, and it was not a vacation, I can assure you that. If it was a vacation, I'd have got to go fishing, but I didn't get to do that. This change order actually came about, Greg Sheep and the emergency management director, and Travis Dawson, I think, Mr. Dove, actually, the EMS director, had actually walked through the building after drywall was installed in the dairy area that connects the kitchen, they felt like it'd be better with everything being consolidated in this, in this area now to remove this one section of wall. Sounds pretty simple, but it's finished, so, you know, it does make it a little bit harder for the contractor, and then taking one area of the actual, where the weight room is, or where we had designated for a weight room, it'll, it'll basically change into a multipurpose, like a training-type room, and that'll free it up. It can always be changed back into a weight room if it needs to be, it's not that, they're going, John Bergen Construction's been great to work with, back to what you mentioned earlier, change orders, this is change order number three, but all three of them's been honor requested, so none of them's been by the contractor or by the architect himself, so that being the case, this area in the floor where it's just going to have a rubber, the rubber mat for like a weight room put down, the, looks like a big Lego puzzle, they're going to turn that, John Bergen Construction's going to turn that over to Haywood County, floor's going to be sandy ground and sealed like the rest of the building.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? And this, this request was done by all parties involved in this, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it was.
When is the project to finish this thing? It's getting close now, isn't it?
Yeah, we were, I mean, right now, we were actually looking at, originally, it was right at the end of May, and of course, then, you know, it got kind of pushed up till right around June, and so this probably puts it between the 2nd and the 7th of June. They still have some weather delay days that they can request that happened early in the project, you know, we went through a complete dry spell while we were doing demo, and then as soon as footing started, it rained every day, so, you know, they do have some rain delay days that they could request if they wanted to, but we're still looking between the first and second week of June. I know John Bergen Construction's wanting to clear this project out for bonding purposes as well.
All right, if there's no other questions, then I'll request a, entertain a motion to request approval of change order number three for the EMS emergency management base for the removal of the wall, sheet rock, and electrical changes per Dale Burrus's request.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Then next, we have Julie Davis with a budget amendment for the 3,718 to be paid from contingency.
You'll notice, this is the same project that we talked about just a little while ago when we were buying the furniture or putting money in for the furniture. The, the amount here, we fortunately knew that this change order was coming at the point we were looking for the money for the furniture, so we left this $3,718 in contingency before we took out that amount for the furniture, so you'll see that once we take this out of contingency, that 45,907 is left, and that's what we use for the furniture, but it is the project contingency.
Okay, all right, any questions to Julie? All right, entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of 3,718 to pay for the change order we just approved.
Second.
A motion by Kevin, second by Bill, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll stay with Dale. Request approval of change order number one in the amount of $20,000 for the new animal services field, sy- shoot facility for sound panels, and these are funds received from donation.
That, that's correct.
Tell us about that.
Yes, it is a mouthful to go through that, that name, but I love it. Yes, I was actually approached, Mr. Teague with Animal Services actually looked into this and had a donor, because we were having to remove the sound panels, and it was a sound panel allowance that was in the project, so everybody that bid this project put this same $20,000 in there for the sound panel, so there's, there's no money difference whether you'd went with contractor B or C or A, we went with A, because they were the low bidder, but it is an allowance, it's $20,000. A donor has stepped up to actually fund that $20,000 to pay for that, and I think everybody's got the letter from, I don't know whether this is a private donor or what, but.
I'll confirm it's a private donor, I'm not putting the name out there, and the money's been received, to my understanding.
Private donor, anonymous? They don't want us to announce who it is?
I'm not announcing it this time because I don't have anything that says they could, I could.
Okay, anything to encourage folks to donate money, you know, we'll do that, so if they want their name announced, we'll, we will do it.
Okay, I will, but I had not confirmed that they wanted that with Doyle and the other.
Okay, we don't want to do it if they don't want.
That's the reason I brought it up, because I didn't want to mention anyone's name, so the, the funds would be placed or turned over to the finance department or to Haywood County to put in the project. USDA also has to approve this change order, it does not appear to be an issue because the funds will be there, but we have to have the minutes from this part of the, the meeting to attach to that, that's just part of the USDA requirements, pretty simple, but I need a approval by the county commissioners to allow the contractor to go ahead and get these panels ordered, because they are moving along quite quickly with that project. I may have been out, but I know what's going on.
All right.
I do appreciate somebody doing the donation, I felt like taking the sound, sound panels out was being counterproductive, and so Doyle, I wish he'd expressed our thanks for whoever that was. I appreciate that, I think that'll be a big improvement.
I too want to thank anybody that's willing to donate to help the cause, I guess, I thought that all that was put in because it seemed to, at the end there, when we voted on this thing, you know, it seemed to be quite a bit of stuff that we had pulled out to try to save a little bit of money that, that was put back in. The other question that I have, and obviously, I guess it answers it, but, you know, there is an effort out there for donors to raise an amount of money to come back to the county to offset some of the cost, and with this 20,000, it was not part of that pot, separate, completely separate?
This, this was, when we were looking at it, it was an allowance, and so this was not part of the original cost. Someone, a donor determined that, knew that we had taken this out in, in an effort to keep costs down and. keep costs down and said, "I'll pay for that." It's the same thing that happened with the front piece of the building. When that was taken off the table, they came back and said, "We have money." Well, it wasn't a single donor in that case. We want that piece added back. So people are throwing, putting money on the table to make the... For the building.
I understand. And then, of course, there was a gentleman here the last meeting, and he's been here a couple of times, continuing to ask for updates on the amount of money raised that comes back to offset some of the county expenses. And I'm assuming, do we have an update on that?
Doyle's coming around. Commissioners, while Doyle's coming around, do you all have any questions?
The only thing I have is Dale, the $20,000, was it in the original budget or no? Well, what we had... Let me see if I can back up because... And congratulations, by the way. I haven't been here since you started. I guess congratulations. It'll be determined. The original scope of work had that $20,000 allowance in it. And we had a number, and I can't remember off the top of my head what that exact number was, that was basically where the county and the commissioners and everyone felt comfortable of doing this project. And so we had to work backwards from that number to remove items that we felt that donors could come up with, one being the training room in the front part of the building as alternate, and as alternate one. So there was donations that came in, actually put that back into the project. So that was part of the original... That then became part of the original contract now, just as this will. The exact numbers for this was, as I said, was an allowance. So it could come in that once H&amp;M Constructors really get down... Because they're going to beat their suppliers up, because if they can make 10% profit on it, they're going to make 10% versus eight. So they'll beat their suppliers up to try to get this down. So if they're able to get the sound panels in, purchased, and installed for less than the $20,000, that's actually money towards something else that, if this donor would rather it go towards something else, but it is in the project. I hope I may have went around in a circle to answer your question, but I tried to. No, I understand. Okay.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Doyle.
Met with the friends. We actually have a meeting tomorrow night and saw their agenda. It looks like they're getting close to $300,000 in funds raised. They've already gave a check for $175 previously. So they're working hard. They haven't started their actual capital campaign. They're in the planning stages for their events for the summer. But they are working hard to get that million dollars raised.
And, you know, I hope they really are successful. I really do. But obviously, you feel pretty good that they're... I mean, it's moving toward what the goal is.
I believe it will. They've hired a professional fundraiser to help them organize and do this right. So I think we've identified as some good donors who are going to help us, and I think that they will meet their goal.
Would this $20,000 donor also be a donor on the other side?
She has already donated $50,000.
Okay. Wonderful. That's what I wanted to hear.
We're going to figure out who it is pretty soon. All right. Any other questions? All right.
Just a comment. This...
Okay.
You know, a lot of people said, "Well, we'll never get money from this group." I believe that statement has been proven false. You know, one person coming up with that kind of money, that's putting your money where your mouth is, in my opinion. Thank you.
I do want to thank all the people that donated for that. You know, I thought it was funny. Heard somebody say one time, we didn't ask the lawyers and the judges to do the justice center. But, you know, we are having citizens step forward to fund this bill, and it's the only bill in I know in the county that we've had that happen. And I appreciate everybody that's doing that.
All right. Then I don't think I've... We hadn't voted on this yet, have we? All right. I'll entertain a motion to request approval of change order number one in the amount of $20,000 for the new Animal Services Facility for Sound Panels for funds received from a donation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. And again, as everyone has said, we're very much appreciative of that donor. Next is the request approval of budget amendment for the $20,000 for the sound panels. Julie?
I'm bringing you the budget amendment again for $20,000 from donated funds to increase the contract for the animal shelter.
Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment for $20,000 for the sound panels.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Next, Julie will be with us and talk about the request approval of proposed audit to audit, proposal to audit accounts for the county annual audit.
It's been a number of years since we've gone out for bids for our annual auditors that you pay to come in and look at all our books every year. We sent an RFP out. We actually put it on the website. We sent it to nine CPA firms. We received three responses, and you have some of the information on the responses in your packet. The pricing is pretty close. What we... The way we send the RFP out is we send it in two parts. Well, actually, we asked to receive it in two parts. One with the qualifications and then a separate part for the pricing. So we look at all the qualifications first and make sure we're comfortable that the firms that are submitting their proposals are qualified to do the audit. And when we looked at those, I think all of them are qualified to do the audit. We did notice that two of the firms had extensive governmental auditing experience. And of those two, there is definitely a lower price. I know Gold Killian CPA Group, and I know Dixon Hughes, both. We've used Dixon Hughes for a number of years, and they're a good auditing firm. And I know Gold Killian CPA Group also. I am not familiar with W. Green from Whitefield, North Carolina. I have actually called them and had some conversations with them, and I've also gotten some references for them. They appear to be a very capable auditing firm. I've got them all three in here in case you would like to go with the very lowest price, although I think a little bit more auditing experience is probably going to be a good thing for us to use. The lowest price of the... Of those firms with experience is Gold Killian CPA Group.
Okay. Commissioners?
Couple of questions or a couple of statements, okay? I know years ago, when we looked at... And while I was on the school board, we looked at changing CPA accountant firms, and we went with the cheaper one, and we turned out not getting a very good audit. Our finance officer didn't feel comfortable with it, and so we reverted back to Dixon Hughes. Since I've been on this board, we've used Dixon Hughes, and, you know, they've been very good, and I'm sure you're very comfortable with them. But I'm looking at this Gold Killian. They've got a lot of the same experience. You seem to know something about them?
Yes. In fact, I used to work for Gold Killian CPA Group.
And they are about $16,000, $17,000 cheaper for the year. So being my opinion, you know, even though I know Dixon Hughes has been very good, but due to the experience and the comfort level you seem to have with that, my opinion would be that we need to save the money.
Anybody else got any comments about the auditor?
I agree with what Michael said.
What about...
The only comment I have is, you know, you hate to leave a group that's done an outstanding job for you. How many years have we had Dixon Hughes?
We've had them for six years. Before that, we had Martin Starnes for three, and before that, we'd had Dixon Hughes since before I started working here. They weren't Dixon Hughes. It was... They were a different name at that point. But they've been... They've been good, but they've been a little on the expensive side, which is why we go out for bids.
Okay. Is this audit something we have to do? Is it state required?
Yes, it's state required. It certainly is.
I agree with what Michael said. You know, I mean, from an experience standpoint, they're close to Dixon Hughes, and to save that kind of money, I would be all for that. Because looking at everything I can see here, the experience is close to the same, and I feel comfortable with you working for them as well, Julie. Knowing what we have in you, must be a pretty good company, so.
I think they're a good firm. It was a long time ago. It was a long time ago that I worked for them.
Well, I mean, you hate to change, you know, but I mean, but that's our duty, is periodically we need to send it out for, you know, requests. I mean, you know, to see. And, you know, and when you've got a situation where... And I know the comfort level that we all have had with Dixon Hughes and what the comfort level we had with Dixon Hughes at school system. And I know what we did when we tried to go to the cheaper one. I know what happened there. So... But when you do this process and you've got two very light or compatible companies that have very, very similar experience, and our chief financial officer for the county has a pretty good comfort level with it, and savings of $16,000, $17,000, $18,000, I think that's what we need to do.
Okay. And just for the benefit of the public, because this is a professional services contract, we do not have to go with the low bidder, and that's why we're discussing between these three. Otherwise, in a lot of other contracts, we have to go with the low bidder as long as they meet minimum qualifications. Julie, just for the board's benefit and the public, could tell us a little bit about what you discovered about W. Green P L L C, since they were the low bidder? They don't serve as... They don't have as much experience, but what is your opinion of that?
They have one county, and I did notice that that county's audit was not submitted to the local government commission as of last week, which caused me a little concern. But when I talked to the finance director at the county, it was Robertson County, she said it was because of the floods. It really wasn't the auditor's fault at all. But it did make me a little concerned that they didn't have... They had one county and the audit wasn't submitted to the LGC.
All right.
This particular year, because of the floods, all the audits were late. You'll remember ours was a little bit late. We didn't get ours till December.
Okay. All right, Commissioners. You guys ready to vote? Okay. All right, then, let's see. I'll entertain a motion that we approve.
Gold Killian.
All right. Mike's making a motion that we approve Gold Killian CPA as the auditor, and Kevin is seconding that. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate your work in looking into those. Next is request approval of appointments of Angie Leatherwood and Tina Maschirelli. I don't know if I said that right, to the Tourism Development Authority for 28785, 28786, 1% zip code committee. We got Lynn Collins here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Lynn.
We've had two vacancies on that subcommittee. It's a five-member group, and we need to get those filled since their work for the year is coming up in a month or so. So the Waynesville Board of Aldermen have recommended Angie Leatherwood to fill the vacant seat representing the 28785 zip code. The way that's broken out, since that contains two zip codes, is that one representative of that group has to be from the 28785 zip code. So that's Angie Leatherwood, and then the other would be Tina Maschirelli for the vacant seat on the 28786 portion.
Okay.
And the Board of Aldermen, the Waynesville Board of Aldermen did approve that at their meeting in February 28.
All right. Any questions of Lynn? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve both Angie Leatherwood and Tina Maschirelli to the TDA Board for the 28785 and 861% zip code committee, subcommittees.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is request approval of appointment of Dr. Elizabeth Ferguson to the Health and Human Services Board of Directors. Ira?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is just a simple request, requesting that Elizabeth Ferguson be appointed to the Health and Human Services Board of Directors. She's been vetted by the Health and Human Services Board, and she would be the role of the dentist on the board. They have so many positions and slots that have to be filled, and this is who they're recommending to fill, the dentist slot that was recently vacated by Dr. Morrison.
Any questions? All right. All in favor of the appointment of Dr. Ferguson to the Health and Human Services Board of Directors as the representative dentist? I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All right. First and second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And that passes unanimously. We're always thankful for the professionals that spend their time serving on those boards as they are required positions. Next is request approval of Health and Human Services Agency Legal Services Unit reorganization. Stony Blevins?
Morning, gentlemen. Coming today to ask for permission to reorganize our legal department at Health and Human Services. This is an area I've actually been looking at since I arrived, and along with my agency attorney, Rachel Halls, we've really been evaluating our options. This year, we're coming to the critical mass where we just simply can no longer accomplish our work with one attorney. Our caseload sizes have risen to the level... This past year, we did almost 3,000 cases in child support court. We also served 617 children this past year in juvenile services, adult, I mean, abuse, neglect, and dependency. And also, we had 28 adult hearings, which are guardianship cases, exploitation cases of senior adults. And that area, I believe, will only grow for us as our senior population continues to grow. Also, with the consolidation of our agency, I need to have been needing to lean on my attorney more and more to help me in public health matters. She also serves as general counsel to my board and as general counsel to me. As you can imagine, I get threatened with lawsuits from time to time. I just try to write it around there to Rachel and have her write me one of those lawyer letters. Helps a lot. We also have some organizational challenges that are not related to caseload. There are things we can't control, and some of that is court calendaring. So more and more, over the last six months, we've had situations where we are scheduled for two different courtrooms at the same time, and it's just impossible for one attorney to be in two places. So she runs back and forth courts all day long, but that's not very efficient or effective. The last thing is there's policy changes coming at the state. One has already gone into place. So now, much like EMS and sheriffs have like inter-local agreements where they help each other, we have these also in child abuse and neglect. So if Buncombe County has a conflict case, say it's on an employee of theirs or something, we've had this for years, we'll go and do that assessment for them. In the past, we just did the assessment. We made the decision, so there's no conflict of interest. But then they would handle the actual case management of the case, whatever happened. Now we have to see that case through to its conclusion, even if we take that child into custody. Used to, it would have been in the custody of the county that we helped. Now that child would be in our legal custody, even though they live in another county. While that has all kinds of ramifications for staffing, the difficult part is now I have to send our attorney to that county to hold all those hearings, because the child is a resident of that county, which again forces me to take my single attorney out of the county, and they're not available for me here. We currently contract with an attorney for overflow cases now, and that has risen last year. The last two years, we've had to contract for 400 hours a year, and I anticipate that to be more this year. So we looked at all of our options, and we actually have three legal assistants on our staff that help with child support and child welfare and general counsel. And one of them actually came to me and said she would be willing to work part-time, that she would actually like to work part-time. So we looked at the math and did the figures and realized we could take the money we were spending on that contract attorney... were spending on that contract attorney, hire a full-time attorney, take our paralegal, and take her down to part-time, non-benefitted, so there would be no increase in headcount, no increase in county benefits, and to get that second attorney, we really would cost us about seventy-three hundred dollars a year more, and I actually did not figure into these, the figures, our revenues on that, because this person would be doing so much child support, we'd get sixty-six percent reimbursement from the federal government for every dollar we spent, so we're really looking at less than twenty-five hundred dollars to add the second attorney, and keep our staffing the same as it is today.
Does that factor in the, the four hundred hours, contract hours as well, that we're spending? I mean, obviously, we're spending that money to contract the attorney that have a contract, independent contract.
Yeah, so if you look at the current structure, that includes the forty thousand dollars on the contract attorney, that we will roll into salary when we add, add a full-time attorney.
Okay.
So is it four hundred dollars, I mean, four hundred hours a year?
Yes.
Okay, at, what's your basic contracted rate?
Hundred dollars an hour.
Hundred dollars, okay. Which is probably a pretty low end, huh?
Yeah, actually, this contract attorney gives us a pretty good price, as far as attorneys go.
What's it, what does he charge?
Hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, that's pretty good. No.
That's what you charge, okay.
Um, okay, commissioners, you have any questions of Stony?
Stony, you're looking at implementing this pretty quick, too, right?
We would, we feel like if we get going, we could implement it by the first of the year, and it's a good timing, because obviously, what we're looking at here is, is Ms. Halls would be our senior attorney, so she would be our lead attorney and continue to supervise the whole legal staff. This attorney would come in sort of as a junior attorney, so be a great job, we feel like, for someone just starting out, maybe coming out of law school, law school's getting ready to graduate, so the timing really could not, could not be any better for us.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm gonna make a comment, okay? I'm very familiar with what our attorney on staff now does, and she's well-respected throughout the, the courts or whatever, and she has an extremely large workload, and she has a new family, and so, we need to keep her, and this helps to do that.
Yeah, that, that's true, and I'm in the courts, and I don't, I don't deal with this particular, you know, in this court very often, but I do know that the, that the judges are very complimentary, and they've given numerous accolades to Ms. Halls about her abilities, and, and the county benefits from her tremendously. Okay, so we need to try to help her out and help Stony out as well. All right, anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to request, at the request to reorganize the Legal Services Unit for the Health and Human Services, and that would be by adding, by, I guess, decreasing one of the paralegals to part-time, and then the increase of an attorney to assist with court.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
That pretty much pays for itself.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Stony. Uh, next is request approval of interlocal agreement with the town of Waynesville, related to three parcels of real property near Cavalry Street, to be developed into a park, playground, parking lot, and picnic facility. Ira Dove is here, and Mayor Brown.
Good morning. Yes, Mayor Brown has been here, and I just wanted to talk about the local agreement, and then I'll step back in case any, the mayor wanted to make any comments, just briefly. I'll talk just briefly. This interlocal agreement, we were here before, and you voted to work on getting a park. As discussed at the prior meeting, it is anticipated that the park would be a joint, exercise, a joint project between the town of Waynesville and the county, and so that the, the land would go to the town, and there are conditions, that's what basically the interlocal agreement is, that the three parcels would go to the town, they're gonna develop a park, they're going to, including a playground, picnic facility, that one of the first things they're gonna do is to assume control and security of the property, and to take out the structure there that's been some problems for that neighborhood, and my understanding is, it says within six months, they'll get that done. But my understanding is they may get that done much sooner, and perhaps Americans speak to that. So they're very excited about, you know, we're very excited about this project, and I'll step, step aside for the mayor to mention the other things, other than one thing, there is a reverter clause, that if they failed to use this as a park, it would come back to the county under the interlocal agreement.
That last comment points out that we can't take...
Mayor, come on over here, so make sure everybody can hear you.
The, the last comment that Ira made points out that we can't simply not use it and sell it, and make some profit off of it, which wouldn't go, wouldn't go well with this community. We understand that you have a substantial sum of money in this, I understand approximately twenty thousand dollars. I believe that we'll spend substantially more than twenty thousand dollars on this park, but it proves once again that what Thad Yur said one time is, is that people in Haywood County, we fight a lot, but at the end of the day, we get it right, and I think this is an occasion when we're doing the right thing. Your expenditure and our expenditure will make the whole community better at the end of the day, and for revenue purposes, I believe it will increase the tax value in that community. So I see it as a community service, I see it as a revenue service also. The other person that's actually going to benefit from this is Mountain Projects, which I serve as the chair of, and Patchy Dowling is looking forward with great delight to see that area developed, so that her, her customers and her kids can use that with their parents on a regular basis. So all in all, we're serving all of the community in doing this particular project. And as I look out at the parking deck, and I look up at Deco, and I look out at Raccoon Cove with the sewer line we put in, we've done a lot of things together, and this is just another project that I think shows the community that we do work hand-in-hand for the most part. I would hope that you would approve this, I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, any questions of Mayor Brown?
I got a question. Y'all haven't got a design yet for this property yet?
No, we have a sketch, Preston Gregg, our engineer, did a sketch, just to show the board what might occur, but no, we haven't done any design work at this point in time.
And, you know, after visiting the property and seeing the condition of the property, and exactly where it's located, and, you know, it definitely needs an uplift, there's no doubt about that. I think, from my general information, it would just be nice, when you all do get a design, be nice to share it with the public, and show, you know, what you're trying to do out there, just for, you know, informational purposes, and...
At, at our last meeting, that was a point that was made, that this process will be a public process, and hopefully, the community engages in the design and the, and the use factor that we develop.
And I, and I sure, I, I think that that definitely will happen, but I mean, we, we, you know, we may not see it, I'd just like to see it. I think it would be great, because I'm very interested in that community, I know a lot of people out there, went to school with a lot of people out there, and, you know, always, it's a historical area, and so, you know, it'd be nice to just keep, keep following it.
We are, we are in the process of applying for a grant to do an historical study of that community, to bring back into play names and places that have long been lost, unfortunately. So, this is a secondary component of our effort, the town's effort, to do this, and as far as bringing the product to you in advance, I can assure you that we'll show it to you well before we ever, ever get going with it, it's what you would do with a partner at any time.
And I, I don't doubt that you all have a great idea in place, I know we talked a little bit about it, but, you know, just, it's just nice to see what's going on, because if you don't go out there and, you know, personally look, and that's, I had no idea where that piece of property was located, until I actually went out there and visited, and seen the condition, and how close in proximity, proximity it was to the, you know, the businesses, and the church, and the residential areas right there, so, so just an informational situation.
Bill, our police chief, he is as happy as anybody, because this is going to solve a, a police problem, a criminal issue, that he's been fighting with for several years. So I think all in all, we're, we're working all the angles that are possible to provide a, a suitable place for the community to gather, and to, at the same time, take away a criminal element that they really don't want in their community.
Any other comments or questions? And, and I do think this is a win-win for the community, and appreciate the community coming out here several weeks ago in support of this, and, and the town willing to take this on, and I, I think that, you know, sometimes, we can attempt to try to get some monies back, but in this particular case, as you'd mentioned, Gavin, just the fact that it's gonna be turned into a park will increase the value of the properties in, in the county, we'll probably end up getting that money back, just by creating a better environment down there. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the interlocal agreement that has been presented by Ira, supported by Gavin and the town of Waynesville, for working with them with the transfer of the real property at Cavalry Street, to develop a park, playground, parking lot, and picnic facility.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye? Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of a contract for W and C Paving to construct Highway two oh nine Convenience Center, the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand, nine eighty-six forty-five, to be paid from the Solid Waste Fund. We have David Francis, our Solid Waste Tax Administrator.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Hope everybody had a good weekend, I certainly did on Saturday night.
I like that tie, too.
Thank you, thank you. It was a good game. The, finally, after eight years, in our ninth year of looking for a site for Highway two oh nine Convenience Center, I think there's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel, I'm seeking approval of the, go into the contract with W and C Paving, an amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand, nine eighty-six forty-five, for the construction of the new Convenience Center located on the former Crabtree Elementary School site. Also, part of this, as Julie will tell you, on our budget amendment, we're adding, we are moving the septic system off of where the project site is, to a location behind the school, and the cost of the demolition of the former site, from, from, you know, where the former site is, we have to take all the fence and all, remove all that back to where it's just a little pull-off area. The state was gracious enough to not make us pull up the, anything, any of the pavement or anything else that's there right now. It's mostly gravel, but don't want to put anything else up there. Okay. So, so, but, you know, there was five bidders for this project, and they were the lowest bidder. Any questions you might have?
Commissioners, any questions? David?
They were about ten thousand lower, is that right, David?
Yes, sir.
Than the next bidder?
Yes, sir. Now, there's ten thousand lower than the estimated cost, they were significantly lower than the other bidders.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, forty-five thou, yeah, forty-five thousand. Go ahead, Kevin, I'm sorry.
I just, I appreciate that you're a local Haywood County contractor.
Okay, any other questions of David? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract for W and C Paving, a local paving company, to construct Highway two oh nine Convenience Center, in the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand, nine eighty-six forty-five, which was the low bid, by approximately forty-five thousand dollars, and actually, under the estimation.
So moved.
Kevin's made a motion?
Second.
Bill, second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
And to bring you up to date, as Mr. Sorrells mentioned earlier, the Mooney Cove Convenience Center site is rolling along, we're estimated about two weeks, two and a half weeks ahead of schedule, and we're in the process of working on a change order that will have a decrease in the overall cost of the Convenience Center. So we'll have that, as we talked at the last meeting, given the authority to Mr. Dove to sign off on any decreases, so we will have that done, hopefully, by this week.
All right, thank you for that data, David, appreciate you working on these projects.
Sure, no problem.
Next item is request approval of budget amendment for the capital project for the two oh nine Convenience Center, four hundred and one thousand, six thirty-seven, to be paid from transfer from Solid Waste Special Revenue Fund. Julie Davis.
The budget amendment I have actually takes into account the three hundred and nineteen thousand dollar construction, but it also adds some of the engineering fees, and the administrative, the engineering and administrative costs, as well as some of the other costs that David mentioned, that are done by engineers, I think Bunnell Lemmons and all that have been doing some work for us. The total amount is four hundred and one thousand and six thirty-seven, and that also includes eighteen thousand for contingency, just in case we need that, that may go up as we decrease the project cost. But this is all a transfer from the Solid Waste Fund, if we don't use all those funds, then we will transfer the money back into the Solid Waste Fund for future projects.
Okay, any questions of Julie? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment as she presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the added item. The Republican Party is asking for a waiver of the electronics deposit for use of this, this room on March eleventh, apparently, right now, okay, I'll let Ira come up and make some comments about this.
I'll just be very brief. Representative Clampett held a town hall meeting in here without the use of the electronics, and after that, I was asked if the, for the meeting that they have scheduled for the eleventh, if they could use the electronics, so, because the acoustics were not good, if you attempted to put a speaker system in front of our system. That, that's basically where we're at, they, they ask if they could do that without, typically, there's a, under the program, a five hundred dollar electronic deposit fee for any building, they simply wanted to use the mics, not the rest of the electronics for their meeting, so we wouldn't be dropping the screens or anything like that, which is, to me, where your more real risk of damage of this facility come in, it would simply be turning on the mics, and the, the understanding is that nothing would be moved, I mean, maybe the mic gets moved up and down, but no movement of podiums or anything like that, no movement of the mics from the places they're in.
Okay.
Without it, if you have a large crowd in here, you probably couldn't hear or conduct a productive meeting.
All right, commissioners, have any questions or comments about that? I mean, personally, I, I mean, as long as, and I, we probably need to establish some type of policy of who could use it, but I don't really have a, have a problem with that, you can't hear in this room very well if you don't have access to the, the microphone.
You're waiving a refundable deposit, too, so...
Do what?
You're waiving, you would be waiving a refundable deposit.
Is there any stipulation that if there was damage, that they would be responsible, even if we waived? I mean, I don't think that'd be the case, but, you know, and, and have we done this before?
I don't know that we've waived deposits for this room, as far as I know in this room.
So, so the deposit's five hundred dollars?
Correct.
But that's if, that's because it's an anticipated to use all the electronics in here, is that right? Not just the speaker system?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, wha...
Well, and I'm gonna agree with you, because, you know, without these microphones, it's very difficult to hear out there.
Right.
Very difficult, so...
So, Ira, I mean, should we, should we maintain some type of deposit, just lower the amount for groups that come in here that want to use the speaker system, or, I mean, I mean, there is a potential of damage, I mean, I want to make the room available reasonably to people to utilize, because it is a, it's a, you know, it's a county building, and...
I, I think your whole fee structure is worth exploring at some time, so I think two decisions, one, what do you want to do on this one particular occasion, and then two, I think your whole fee structure is worth exploring, because particularly in this building, we now have like metal detectors, so the sheriff's office shows up at all of the meetings and stuff like that for here, but it's not necessarily in the way that the policy is written.
I'm okay with waiving it, I mean, allowing to use it, and that would be for either party, you know, that would want to use this room, so I'm okay with waiving it for this particular situation, we can review it, you know, going forward, as you've suggested.
I agree with that. Yeah, I don't really have a problem with it, I would think that if there is a need to revisit the fee structures and talk about that a little bit, it needs to be, but I think we also need to be prepared that this is the way we're gonna do it now, if they're gonna use the, the system, probably gonna have to allow it to be used, you know, without... I'd just like to see some stipulation in the little agreement that, you know, even though we're waiving it, if there was potential damage, you know, be responsible. you know, even though we're waiving it, if there was potential damage, you know, be responsible.
I think if anybody causes damage to any county property, that we can show that it was their fault, we could, we would have remedies.
And what's the policy on the use of this room?
It falls under your facility use policy, and basically on this room, the electronics would be a $500 deposit. They did pay the room rental fee.
What is that?
They paid $25 an hour, which basically covers turning on the lights and your maintenance person. If people request sheriff's presence, in this case, I had requested the sheriff's presence, so they weren't charged the extra $15 an hour.
Okay.
Just simply because order and control of the building. But I've been requesting that. It's not anything particular about this group. I've been requesting that for anybody who shows up since we've had a metal detector.
Okay.
So other groups have been paying $500 to use the-
I haven't been asked, I don't know that any group has rented the electronics since I've been in the last three years for this room.
This might be the first case.
Yes.
Coming up, okay.
How would it get turned, how does it get turned on? Who would turn on the speakers?
The facilities person. They, it's basically you, there's a power button in the back that covers the mics.
Right, flipping on the mics.
There are more buttons covering, there's more covering the other electronics in the room, but basically the mics, you just flip one button in the back.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? So should we do this, should we make this decision for just this one waiver, or should we do this as, should we make this a new policy?
I think that we do it, this one waiver, and then look at the restructure and the fee, just look at, you know, do a little quick study on it and maybe redo something.
Okay. Good? Everybody good with that? Okay, I'll entertain a, a motion that we waive the electronics deposit for the use of this room on March 11th for the Republican Party, and that thereafter, we take each request on a case-by-case basis.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Okay, that is all that I have for open session. Does anyone have anything else before we go into closed session? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to attorney-client privilege, North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.11A, 3.
So moved.
Mike, Mike and Kevin, any discussion? I'll entertain a, heck, let's go. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in closed session. Okay, we've returned after closed session, and just want to make an announcement about closed session. Two items that we were discussing in closed session. One was the, which we're not a party to, and that is the Haywood Community College suit against Miles McKellen Construction Company. At all, there are numerous defendants involved in that suit, and that is involving the creative arts building. The county's not part of that, but we, we have the loan on the property, and actually the building's in our name at this point in time until it gets paid off. And so we needed to be apprised of that. And then also, we had a discussion that was attorney-client privilege regarding Duke Life Point and property tax commission appeals. And then, we didn't make any other announcements regarding closed session, though?
No, but we had a personnel matter.
Okay, there was a personnel matter.
I apologize, should have, I should have announced.
North Carolina General Statute, 143, 318.11A. I think it's one, is it one? Personnel?
Yeah.
Personnel.
At any rate, we did have a brief, very brief discussion regarding personnel. Okay, anybody else got anything for open session? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes, and we are adjourned.